All right. I will call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Committees, committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. We can all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen.
Come on, that's perfect.
Thank you. This is our semi-regular Select Board Goals and Objectives meeting. We're joined tonight by our facilitator, Mark Rogers. Mark, thank you for joining us.
My pleasure.
And I guess I will turn it over to you to get in the meeting.
Perfect. Well, good evening. So, I understand it's after work. I understand you're all full of pizza. Okay, so we're gonna try to keep this as uplifting as we can and as lively as we can as we move forward. So I would start with a couple of things. I'm gonna introduce myself before I ask you to give a quick introduction for me. Name is Mark Rogers. I live in Webster, Mass., which is central Massachusetts, just south of Worcester. Been there about 15, 20 years. Been married to the same woman for 46 years. God bless her. Have two children, one 40, one 37, four grandkids, one on the way. And my oldest child and his grandkids live in Vietnam, so we have an interesting, interesting life right now. Had about a 42, I didn't quite the numbers, but look at it, 40-plus year corporate career. During that corporate career, I was a leader of teams for most of it, not quite all of it, but for most of it. That's what I love doing more than ever. I retired from full-time corporate work, I can't remember if it was four or five years ago, but it was a while ago. And at that point, I did two things. I opened a consulting business, which I do, and that involves offshore distribution of investment products, but I also offered a coaching, a coaching business. I have a coaching certificate. I'm a master certified coach. I do individuals and I do groups. I like doing this. I have a Bachelor of Science in Journalism, God knows why, and I have a Master of Science in Strategic Leadership. So, and I'm happy to be here, because if I wasn't here, I'd have to be golfing, and I hate golf. So, because that's where my wife is right now. So that's who, that's who I am. And we'll talk about what we're gonna try to accomplish here in a fairly short period of time in a minute. But I wonder if you would do me a favor, and bear with me when I ask you to do this, but I'm gonna ask you each to introduce yourself to me. I'd like to know your name, how long you've been on the board, and then I'd like you to tell me something about yourself that doesn't have to be true. Okay? Something that, something that no one else knows. So I'll give you an example. As in, when I first went through this exercise, what I told people was that I read and write poetry virtually every day of my life. Okay? Now, I won't tell you now whether that's true or not, but that's what I came up with. So something that the rest of the group probably wouldn't know. So, Mark, you and I already met. We'll start with you.
Okay. I'm Mark Townsend. I'm the chairman of the board. I've been on the board, this is my second term. I've been in town since 1983, and a lot of people in town know this, the board may not, but I guess one of my greatest joys since I've been in town was coaching all my kids' sports teams. So something I really enjoyed and I miss a lot.
Okay, that doesn't count.
Okay.
Just something about yourself that wouldn't be obvious, that people couldn't observe, that you can think of. Don't embarrass yourself, though. I'm not trying to get too much.
No, I don't think you can embarrass myself. Well, the fact that I get up at 5:30 every morning to return emails, is that something that everybody else might not know?
And don't forget, it doesn't have to be true.
Jim, it's true.
I'm Jen Bogart. I've been in town for 10 years, gotten involved within months of moving here. I've got two little girls trying to set a good example for them. Been on the board since 2020, so a year and a half, and I have been on the radio, in movies, and in TV shows.
Huh? How long you been in town?
10 years. Yeah, but you don't know if it's true or not.
Left in a year, right?
Uh, yeah.
Sarah, good afternoon.
Hi, how are you? So I'm the vice chair of the Select Board.
Okay.
I've been on the board for 12 years. Just got elected to my fifth term. I was the conservation agent for about 15 years. Was on the planning board for 10. And I grew up in Philadelphia.
Great. You get a pass?
Thank you.
Jim?
Jim Hoffman. My wife and I have been in Carver for 31 years. We have three children, two not living at home, one living at home. Been on the Select Board since 2020 along with Jen.
Okay.
Before that, I was on the planning board for six-plus years. And, uh, hmm. I get up 5:30 every morning to go on the treadmill.
Sure, we're both up at 5:30. We can, we can have a phone conversation.
Well, again, we don't know if it's true.
It's true.
Bob? My name's Robert Felbin. I've lived here in 20-plus years right now, I think. Been a selectman, this is my final year for this term. Haven't decided if I'm gonna run again. But I have three kids. They're all out of school now, working careers. And I like to dance.
All right. Okay. How many people here think it's true that I read and write poetry every day?
I do.
You're right. I do.
Every day.
Well, virtually every day. So, how many, well, you said it was true, so we know Mark does get up at 5:30.
I do.
How many people think it's true that Jen has been on radio, movies, did she say the stage?
On TV.
On TV?
Oh, yes.
Yeah? Is it true?
Yeah.
It is? Cool. Did Sarah grow up in Philadelphia?
Yes.
Terrific. Now, Jim, you don't look like an early riser to me, but we'll see what the group thinks. Is it, how many people think Jim gets up at 5:30 on the treadmill every day?
Definitely true.
No?
I get up at 7:00.
I ain't going there.
I love it.
I get up at 5:30.
And Dancing Bob, how many people think Dancing Bob is Dancing Bob?
I'd go for that.
Yeah.
Definitely true.
Is it true?
I was going south of that.
Yeah. I love it. So, I'm gonna say a couple of things about the role, about my rules, about engagement as we do this, if we could, and, and then we'll sort of get started, okay? And we'll just see where this takes us. We have an agenda. You know, if we accomplish what you all want to accomplish, and I really don't care a lot about the agenda, right? I just want this to be a success for you, and we'll go from there. I wanna thank you all for what you do. That's not an empty thanks. I've been around local government, like most of us, my whole life. Being a select person, a member of the Select Board, whichever terms we use here, is pretty much a thankless job. It really is. And we get, we can get a lot out of it, it's not easy to do, and it's an incredibly, if you wanna do it well, it's an incredibly complicated job. Now, I was just thinking about, about communication a little bit. As a board, you have to think about communication with each other, communication to some extent with employees, communication with the town administrator, communication with, with the public, communication with committees that wanna join, et cetera. There's a lot of stakeholders that you all have to deal with, and at times it can be overwhelming, at times it can be, oh, I just don't care anymore. Okay, I get it. So it's a complicated job, and I just wanna commend you for doing it. I don't, I'm not quite sure anybody would really want to, to tell you the truth. So, rules of engagement as we go through this is, number one, this has gotta be interactive. If it's not, it's gonna be a very short night, and, and that's not what I want, and that's not what you want, I don't think. So, please speak up, let's hope this is a safe place for everybody. I am gonna be asking you a couple of questions where people won't know what you answered, unless you want them to, but that's for reasons that I'll explain when we do it, okay? We'll go from there. Need to show respect for each other. Don't have to agree, but if we disagree, we disagree respectfully and in a constructive manner. I love "I" statements as opposed to "you" statements. I'm uncomfortable with that as opposed to "you're an idiot for saying it," kind of, kind of things will help us, I think, get along a whole lot better as we move forward, and we'll go from there. I don't mind being interrupted. I don't mind questions. I don't mind being challenged, so don't be afraid to do that either. The other thing I'd ask of you, and I can't call it a rule because you don't work for me, but the woman, I forget their names now, in Harvard did a study where they brought 40 people into a room to teach them a topic, and all 40 people were forced to give up their telephones. Half of them, the telephones were turned off and put in a basket in the room. The other half, the phones were taken out of the room. So nobody could check their phone, nobody could get a call, nobody could hear it vibrate, nobody could hear it ring. And the retention rate was 23% higher for the people whose phones were out of the room. So, if we can ignore our phones to the best of our ability here for the next 90 to 120 minutes, I think it would be good for all of us to sort of move it forward. Okay? So, I don't give a lot of lectures, mostly because I'm not that bright, but we've all heard the expression about, about thinking outside the box, right? Or acting outside the box, et cetera? And it's easy to say, and we all often, often feel as though that's what we do, but we like our boxes, okay? We really do. And we should like our boxes. Our boxes protect us, our boxes bring order into our life, our boxes, the reason we like them is because they work. Okay? They, in a very large extent, they work. But they're also very limiting, okay? Because our boxes can be limiting. So I made some of these things up, but, but if we've got a box here and we're talking about trying to accomplish something, what might be some of the, whoops, wrong one. What might be some of the barriers? Oh, by the way, the other thing I meant to say to you is that by design, I am a low-tech, high-touch guy, okay? It's quite, it's on purpose, it's how I prefer to operate. So you're putting up with flip charts, you're just lucky I don't have a 35-millimeter projector with slides, okay? So, so, you know, so what might be some of the barriers? I'm gonna make these up because they're not important to the discussion. Okay? The voters won't like what we talked about here, okay? The, my colleagues don't get it. The colleagues here around the table don't get it, okay? We've always done it this way. We've always done it this way. What was the last one I did? Oh, we don't have the money. Okay? Or I don't think we have the money. But we're coming from a place of scarcity, which is often the case, particularly in your chairs, and I get it, and I understand why. Okay? And then you, you got things here, you never, never did it before, you know, our workers won't understand, it's gonna take too long to do it, I'm not gonna get reelected, whatever, that we have these boxes here, and this, and that we have them personally, and by the way, you have them as a group, and we don't have time. I usually don't do many one-offs. Usually if I'm doing this kind of thing, it's, it's a continuous thing. So we don't have time to, to go through that. And I'm embarrassed, I can't remember the name, but, so I'm not asking to get rid of your box, because whatever, whatever your box is, I'm not suggesting any of this is any of you, okay? Whatever your box is. What I am asking you to do, and we talked about this today, sorry, even low-tech, I don't know what I mean, is that we want our box to be perforated. Okay? We want our box to be perforated so that things can move in and things can move out. So that as we're having discussions here, or maybe we're feeling a little bit uncomfortable with something, or maybe we've got a bad idea, that at least for tonight, we're willing to, to move that out. Because, by the way, if we don't, what we end up in the middle here is bad, if any communication, we end up with missed opportunities, okay? And then, I mean, maybe lose, lose the faith of our voters, of our colleagues, maybe of ourselves in the process. So they have the ability to, to move the bad ideas out, to recognize old ways, not to suggest they're necessarily bad, but maybe they go out, make sure they're not there just because they are an old way, the way with it we're thinking, and then, you know, any other limiting factors that we can think of. And then we can bring in, I don't know why I bother to write this down, because I know you can't read them, you know? Say we can bring in new ideas. Now, we're willing to experiment a little bit. Either, now, listen, you, you have a large fiscal responsibility, so what you can experiment with is pretty limited, but what you can definitely experiment with is the way you interact with each other, the way you interact with your employees, the way that you discuss matters. You can experiment, especially if you acknowledge that upfront as a group. Say, let's try something. It doesn't work, you know? Doesn't work, it comes out of the box. But, but let's not, let's not be limited by the fact that we're afraid to experiment. Input from others. You know, input from others. So, an example is that I'm the head of the vestry of our church back in town, and we need to find a music director, and a person's name came up. And that person's name is not gonna be moved forward, because two of the choir members happen to be on the vestry as well, so that person just won't, won't take input. I don't, it doesn't have to agree with it, they won't even take it, okay? So they just feel like that was gonna be workable. So allow that input to flow in. Doesn't have to stay, just allow it to flow in, to move forward. And then always, to keep in mind whatever your best practices are, and make sure that they continue to flow in. So what I'm asking you for today, I'll try not to move too much for you, what I'm asking you for today, for these, this little bit of time we have together, is to keep your box perforated and to let it move in and out. Personal growth, and I'm not suggesting I'm coaching any of you personally, is never comfortable. Growth as a group is never comfortable. And I'll be honest with you, is that if we leave here and everybody's feeling completely comfortable, then either I haven't done my job, or you haven't done your job, or some combination of the two. Okay? It's my job to help you feel a little bit uncomfortable and decide what you wanna do with that. Make sense? Okay? Was that a yes or a reasoning? Go away.
Have to wait and see.
Terrific. All right. So, I'm gonna ask you all to, and I'll, I'm gonna pick at random, because I don't wanna go in any particular order all the time, but I'm gonna ask you individually what you hope to get out of tonight. What is it you hope to get out of this session tonight? Jen?
A discussion, because I feel like so often, it's just kind of like factual, and I tend to be a little more colloquial, so I hope it's more of a give-and-take discussion.
Of anything in particular?
Just in general, when we're speaking.
Okay.
I'd like us to speak to, I mean, they can say, I, I make us laugh. So I'd love us to have an energetic discussion.
Okay. So you'd like to have a, a better discourse come out of this and talking with each other?
Yeah.
Perfect. Bob?
Familiarity with the issues.
Now, when you say issues, you need to help me. Are you talking about issues that are on your goal list? Are you talking about issues amongst you guys as a group? What do you mean by issues?
The goal list.
The goal list, okay. Perfect. Sarah?
I will be perfectly honest and say, I really don't know.
I'm already in love with Sarah. Okay. By the way...
Don't Sarah.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Does that say, "Don't Sarah"?
Yeah.
I was supposed to say, "Don't know." Sorry.
A little "don't know."
Slip there.
So, "Don't know." By the way, whenever I do meetings like this, there's always three kinds, and I like suggesting, and you just made me think of it, not because of what, because of what you said, but not because you said it. There's always three kinds of people. There are people that are here enthusiastically, wanna get something done, there are people here that aren't quite sure what they wanna get out of it, and there's someone in this room that was dragged here, right? You know, I mean, I know no one had to drag you physically, but I say, what, what are you doing here? Why doesn't he go home, go back to the lake, go fishing, leave us alone, okay? So I know there's all those three kinds of people here, and I'm hoping you overcome that. Mark, did you come here?
Yeah, I, I think, insight, I think I'm looking to get a little more insight onto some of the goals and objectives that, that the members have, have listed.
And who did I miss? Jim?
Just more communication amongst us all.
Is that different than what we heard from Jen, or do you think the same?
Um, I guess it could probably be the same.
Well, you're not sure, so we're gonna list it. We'll flush it out later. Okay.
Mark? I think one of, some of the things that were raised for this conversation, I think, expectations, clarity of expectations, I think, is, is helpful for, for me and administratively throughout the organization.
Well, I wasn't quite sure when I was gonna say this, but I'll say it now, is that, you know, when I took a look at the 14 goals that you have, okay, I could make a case that at least seven of them had something to do with discussions, clarification, communication, okay? It's clearly an issue that you all feel at some level, okay? So, so I think, thank you for saying that, so I think that it'll, it'll get us in there. Okay? So, Sarah would like to see us to be able to have a discussion and...
No, that's Jen.
Jen said that, so...
Sarah doesn't know.
Jen would like to see us have a discussion. You know, Rick wants to talk about, you know, clarity of expectations, and there's a lot of things that we can talk, we'll try to clarify what we mean by that. Familiar, familiarity with the goals, I think, was that you, Bob?
Yes.
You said that? Okay? Sarah doesn't know. We want a little more insight into the goals, I believe that came from Mark, and then we're back to communication. Okay. Terrific. All right. So, here's, we're gonna, so clearly the goals and understanding the goals are important. So I'm gonna ask you all to do something for me. You all have in front of you, and you're optional, you can do it if you want, Rich, if not. But those are all the 14 goals that are either verbatim or paraphrased that are on the list. You might wanna take the list up with you, so you know what I'm talking about. But what I'd like you to do is, I'd like you to take a minute or two, and I want you to take five of those orange dots, okay? I just was too lazy to tear them off the sheet, okay? Five of those orange dots, and I want you to put them up to the ones that you think are most important. You can pick five, you can put all five on one, you can do whatever you want, but what, so look at those goals, why don't we just take a minute and read them on the list first, and then just go up and just put them for me where you think, what you think are the most important. And again, if you can't read my writing, you have the goals at the back of your pack.
Are we like waiting in line to do it?
No, no, just what we're doing. In fact, I'd rather it didn't, I'd rather...
I got one left.
Yeah, no cheating, by the way. Like, if one's real important, you don't take the six and seven and put it up.
Of course. Sorry, Jen?
All right, I'm done.
Well, thank you for that. So, we have two clear winners, okay?
Three.
Three.
Oh, yeah, can't get over there. So the positive morale. So two of them are very, very similar, and someone's gonna have to have to help me really understand the differences. But we have communication of the path between the TA and the board, and then the communication So communicate expectations with the Select Board members, right? I need one bit of communication. I need one bit of communication. Is it with the Select Board and the TA, or with the board with itself as well as with the TA?
I think that was my goal, and it was a two-parter. I've been really honest from the beginning that, that I, I am new to this, so I've expressed it many times, that I don't know how often we should be talking to each other outside of meetings, or meeting with Rick. I mean, I've said that, how many times did I say that to you? How often? I don't want to be absent. If they're all meeting with him once a week, like, I want to maintain that same level, but I don't want to do too much, and, you know, we've, I, it's come in the years, well, have you talked to Mark? Well, no, I don't really reach out to any of them between meetings, and am I not doing something I should be?
Why don't you reach out?
Because I, I, because I don't know if I should.
You don't know if you should be?
Every time something pops in my mind, do I reach out to Mark? Do I reach out to Rick? I don't know the expectation, because I don't know what everyone else is doing too. And I'm not trying to copycat, but I don't wanna leave the board out of disadvantage, but I also don't wanna, you know, kind of outstout.
Understand, and you've got the open meeting law to think about, right?
Right.
In terms of what, how much can you talk and what can you say? And I'm not an expert on the open meeting law, but...
Right.
I'm sitting on a committee in town now, so that I am becoming a little more versed. But absolutely, okay?
I just wanna make sure that we kind of all know everything.
Okay.
Or, or all know the same information.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Okay.
That may have been more an individual goal that kind of, you know, again, leads to discussion. That's a goal I'd like to solve for myself, but I can't solve it if we don't talk about it.
Jim, can I pick on you for a second?
Sure.
As, as the, as the other new member, newer member, do you feel the same thing?
Yeah, it's, it's hard. You don't know what you're, I guess, what the Select Board is supposed to do. You know, what, what is, what are our, the parameters of our job, if you will?
Okay, well, we're gonna get to that, hopefully, today, so in terms of get your feeling for what you, what you feel your job are, your job is, okay? Anybody else have a reaction to what Jen or...
I, I agree totally that being a new, not as new as you, but being the new member that came in, not having that experience of coming in and not knowing what is your job role, what do you do, and how do you do it, all right? How much is too much talking to the town administrator and, and really knowing what's going on? Is that, there's very little guidance when you get elected about, this is what your job role is, and this is how you do it. So, and I think that's the thing that we need to work on.
Yeah, I think that's what you need too, is the three of us, Bob, Jen, and myself, are first-time Select people, where, if I'm not mistaken, most of the others have been reelected, it was their second term, so there aren't many first-time, it's, you know, newbies to the position, if you will.
So it's a, so it's a new Bob, yeah.
So I, I have a comment about that.
Of course.
So when I first became a Select Board member in 2009, I didn't know anything either, and so I went to talk to the town administrator. We had been there at that point, how many years? Since 96? Yeah. However many years that is. And I didn't know, I didn't understand what free cash was. I didn't understand, there was a ton of, there's a ton of stuff, as we all know. So that's who I went to. I talked to the person who knew this stuff. And, and that's something that I, if I may, would suggest. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it. There's no rule says you can't, the only thing Rick can say is just be a stop father in the everyday, but I think he'd love for the board members to bother him. I, I can speak for you, but I would if I were a TA, I would say, like, where are they, you know?
So I'm hearing two, two things, related, but, but I think there's a nuance there. Sarah, I think what you just described is, is easier to do in terms of, you know what, I don't know what free cash is, I'm gonna go find the treasurer and find out what free cash is, or I don't know how we set the tax rate, I'm gonna go find the tax assessor and find out how we do those things, to get those technical issues, and, you know, my... and find out how we do those things, to get those technical issues, and, you know, I think it's a great suggestion. I thought I heard Jim saying, and if I didn't, and a little bit from Bob too, if I didn't, Jim correct me, is that still just a little bit of discomfort in terms of just talking to each other, not, not just the technical issues, but just, you know, how often do I seek out advice, how often do I, how often do I bug Jim? How often do you wanna be bugged?
Members of this board can bug me 24/7.
Okay.
I'd rather, I'd rather have somebody asking me or telling me something than not. That's, that's, that's the challenge for me, is, you know, what the expectations are of me in the office, because those change over time, those change as board members change, so, so if you don't talk about what those expectations are, you know, you really can't, over the long term, really provide a guidance and really satisfy the board's needs, you have to know what those are and they change.
I think the difficult thing is, you know, when you're elected to the select board, you know, there really is no job description, everyone sees they're all a little bit different, and some people work full-time jobs and they're not available all the time, some people don't, I mean, personally, since I've been on the board, I've always tried to get in to see the town administrator once a week. Sometimes it's for five minutes, sometimes it's quite a bit longer, but I've always tried to stop in and just, hey, what's going on, anything I need to know, something like that. You know, among members of the board, it's, it's certainly more difficult because of, because of the open meeting law.
Yeah.
And you, you can't just call up Bob, or hey Jim, what do you think about this? Hey Sarah, what do you think about that? Because you can't do it. So that, that certainly is an impediment to communication, but that's just the way it is, and I'm sure there's a way around it.
Okay, so, sorry, I know you said you like to be interrupted, but I may do more than you want.
I was just gonna say so, well, Jim, what do you have to say about that?
Okay, so you said you meet with him like once a week for even just a little check-in. Is there always something you wanna talk, or is it, do you just go in and sit down and be like, hey, so what do you have to tell me? Or do you go to him with an issue? Because my, my, how often do we talk to Rick is less about what is free cash and like the, the definition of town running, and it's more about what do we know, like, if I hear a problem with someone, or if I get an idea about something that I think the board should address, I don't, I don't reach out to him, because should we all be bringing our, our problems and ideas straight to him? I guess I see it more as like a board thing, we should be talking to each other about these ideas and not just Rick, 'cause we're, we're a board, we're not five, and trust me, I have a lot to say, but he's not, he's not working for me and what I think should be done, so that's kind of where it comes from, so you...
Yeah, I mean, it, it, I think it's different now that I'm the chair, it's a, it's a different role, and sometimes we're talking about future agendas or, or trying to arrange things, things like that, but prior to, to being the chair, yeah, it was different every week, some, some days I'd just stop in the office, hey, how's things going, anything I need to know, that type of thing. Sometimes it's something, there's something that I think he needs to know, sometimes I hear something, or someone brings something up to me that I wasn't aware of, and I, I wanna make him aware of it, so sometimes it's, it's the other way, around, the other way. So it really varies, there is no set, week by week, or certainly prior to be, be in the chair, there was no set week to week thing, it was just really stopping in and...
But you tried to once a week?
But I always, I always tried to do it once a week.
Okay, so how about you guys?
So, so my feeling on that is, you said that he doesn't work for us, what did you say, he doesn't?
Well, like, he doesn't work for, for me, if I think...
He doesn't work for Jim's personal agenda.
Right. If I, if I think there's issues that I would love the board to address, I'm not going directly to Rick about it, because I think we should work with each other, but...
But I, but, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but I think that that's part of Rick's role, is to understand what each of us thinks is important, and he can't do that if you don't tell him, and then he can facilitate us coming together to talk about it. So if it's, if he hears about it, or whoever's sitting in that seat hears about it at the board meeting, it's like, you didn't tell me, I could've had this all ready for you. So the board would get it that night, instead of, you know, it's just an example. And, and when I said I went to him with questions about free cash, I just used that as kind of a dumb example, what I meant was, even though at the time I was a town employee, there was a lot of stuff I didn't understand about how things worked, the larger budget picture, the whole employee situation, just everything that, you know, many things we'd come up against that you wouldn't as an employee, just, but, but so I think, I personally think it's important to bring those issues, to, to have a TA you can trust, and to be able to bring those issues to him and say, look, these are my, I know it's just my agenda, you know, but it's something I think the board should discuss, what do you think? And then with this particular TA's experience, he could say, well, you know, we tried this once, it didn't work, or that's a great idea, let's see if it works, let's see what the board thinks about it, or, so I think it's always good to give people a heads up.
So how often do you meet with him, or talk to him?
I don't know.
Once a week, maybe?
Yeah, once a week, but I did that, I've been doing that since 2009, and sometimes even then, it was more often, but I had to wait till after work, 'cause I was working. But it, it was very important, I mean, it was, it was a big learning curve, and there wasn't really, there weren't very many other people I could talk to who had been doing it for a while, so...
Jim or Bob? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you both...
Well, I was gonna ask you guys next, though. Well, 'cause again, this is like...
No, so, my feeling on this is that communication is vitally important. Now, I don't go to Rick's office every week, if I have an issue, I'll set up time with him, 'cause he's busy, he's got things to do, I don't wanna interrupt him doing his job for little things here and there, but when we do sit down and talk, one of the things I always say is, is there anything else I need to know? So it elicits that, well, this is going on, this is going on. And sometimes, and I also said this numerous times to him, this is, if I send you a message on the weekend or whatnot, or at night, 'cause that's when I'm up usually, nights, but don't respond until Monday, okay? Keep your weekends to yourself, okay? And I don't want you, if it's an emergency, it's an emergency, I'll say it's an emergency, but otherwise, no, don't, don't bother until Monday. When you take time away from him doing his job, I don't wanna do that for like little things, okay? If something big comes up or whatnot, and, and scheduling it in is important to me. But I don't go every week, like you said, it's, it's whatever happens, or people talk to me, or say, hey, what about this, and I need more information, so... Rick?
Yeah, no, and again, there's no right or wrong, I just like when Bob sets something up, and how many times do we disagree, Bob? You gotta, I mean, you gotta...
It is what it is.
That's it, you know, I'm not afraid to have a conversation and agree or disagree.
Jim, you don't, you don't have to have anything to say, just wanna make sure...
I know, I, I think, especially in the beginning, the first six months, I went to Rick, I had questions or concerns, I think I reached out to just about everybody. My feeling was similar to Bob, he's got a job to do, I don't wanna keep bugging him, I come in the office, you don't have to poke my head in, but I have reached out to, I think, everybody on the phone, just to pick their brain a little bit, but, you know, again, I can't have one issue and call everybody and ask what they think, so I kinda pick and choose who I, or I'll ask.
And again, you have to be careful, the open meeting law, you can't be having a real discussion, where it could tell people with that. So Jim, what does it leave us right now with you, in your vision?
I guess, I guess a little more confidence to know that if something comes up with me, that I, if going to, should go to him, 'cause it, I've always had the board mentality, if there's something, it should get on the agenda. But maybe what I'm hearing you guys say is if I have an issue, I go tell him, and does he think it's something the board should talk about? 'Cause then again, it's kinda like, is he a filter? Like, are you filtering stuff, or, and something I've said too in the beginning was like, if someone's meeting with him like all the time, I, I think I said this in an open session once or somewhere, like, I don't want someone to be more influential on whoever the TA is, because they're meeting with him all the time, or have that person always be the go-to, if, like, again, me, if I'm not meeting with you or whoever often, I don't want to not be a resource.
So when I, when I mentioned the going to him, I, I didn't mean that, that necessarily him as a filter, I, I guess I'm thinking more of the, the institutional knowledge that someone like him, like Rick would have, and the historical knowledge that, I know I've been here quite a while, but there's, he was here way before I, you know, was on the board, so that's the kind of thing that I think is valuable.
And, and I'll give one example, I think last year when we set the tax rate, you know, and I reached out to Jim, because there's no way you would know what that means, you know, what is setting a tax rate? What is it, what is it, you know, what is it for? How do you get to this point? You, you wouldn't know that, you have no idea what that means. And I know what it means, 'cause I've been doing it for a long time, I mean, that's the kind of technical question or matter, that, that's the kind of thing that I should be used as that type of resource, so when people go into a meeting, or they have conversations with each other, they know what this stuff means, you know, and, and again, I think that, that's obviously, you know, a role, and I don't want anybody to think that they can't call me to discuss this, and sometimes, and this isn't an insult, but, you know, you don't know as, as much as you think you know, and I'm in the same, like, we're, we're all there sometimes, and the worst, the thing that I hate the most, and I think it's part of my job, is, is to have public meetings where the board is, is confident, and the board isn't in a position where they don't know what they're talking about, or they, that's what I don't like. You know, I like, I like, I think leading up to a meeting should be, get to a meeting and it should be business, and people shouldn't be trying to get technical information at that time, should be done in advance, that, that's just the way I look at it. Sometimes we, we, we fail, sometimes we don't fail, but I think in general, you know, I mean, we're not building rockets here, okay, I don't wanna go overboard here, but, but in general, I think, not just me, but, but Elaine, and, uh, the resource people should depend on, you know, we don't know, we don't know, but...
So did you just say the worst thing that can happen is for board members to go in there not knowing what's going on?
Well, not knowing some of the, the technicalities that honestly, you wouldn't, you just wouldn't know, I mean, it's not your business, it's not your industry, you know, you know, I don't, I don't know what Mark knows, I don't do what Mark does, I don't know what Jim or Bob does, so if I were to, you know, get involved, I'd have to look for technical expertise in their business, and I think it's the same in this business.
Let me take it back a step, if I might, because I, I think there's something here. Number one, this could be an interesting discussion for you and the board to have in terms of part of your expectations, but what I thought I heard from Jim and from Bob, was not just the technical, but, I'm, I'm gonna be very blunt, and I, I'm not trying to downgrade, they don't, they didn't know how a board works, even, right? In terms of, you know, how does, how does this whole thing work? How do we communicate with each other?
Relationships.
How do we communicate with you? How do we build a relationship? By the way, what's proper, what's improper? And I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to say anything other than it's something to think about, but maybe that's the role of the TA or assistant TA, that when someone's newly elected, that there's a little bit of a playbook, you know, it'd be easy to do, particularly for someone with your experience.
So many people agree on the playbook.
Well, you know, I think that's, that's probably fair, but you could get the board to agree, or you can just say, this is my playbook, and if the board disagrees, they could do it differently.
We kinda talked about that earlier, about a handbook type thing.
Oh, is that right?
Yep.
Almost like the club notes, or as you know.
Yeah, I don't know any towns that do it, they might, but I don't know of any.
Oh, they do.
Do they?
Oh, yeah.
So...
But, and that's probably a good idea, but a similar thing could be accomplished if board members came and talked to the TA and said, how does this work?
Yeah.
I think part of the problem is, I don't, you don't, if you don't know the question...
You don't know what to ask.
You don't know what to ask. So again, again, and I always use the jurisdiction, you know, I don't wanna be outside our jurisdiction, what is that? And I know when I was on the planning board, I knew what our job was, and I knew what our job wasn't.
Okay.
So in the select board, what is our job and what isn't it? And well, we're all learning, but again, I think it's unusual to have a board that three of the members have under two years' experience, that, that might, again, you know...
I think it is unusual.
Yeah, that might be adding to this. And Bob, my closest friend in the world is retired after a 40-plus-year career as a town manager, town administrator, he would love a selectman that said, don't call me until the weekend's over, so, so what?
I think that's, that's another important point to make, though, is that, you know, we are, all five of us are out in the community, we're at the, the sports fields and at Shaw's and at wherever, people come up to us and ask us questions, a lot of times questions that, certainly speaking for myself, questions that I don't have the answers to. And, and, you know, I, I don't work in town, so I, I, I can't always run down to town hall, and, and I will say that Rick has always been good about, you know, I'll call him and I'll get a call back pretty quickly with an answer, which is a, is a resource that I, 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 I'm glad, I'm glad that he's, he's there, and is that kind of, is that kind of communication, so I, I just would encourage the board of, that happens to you, it happens to me quite often, to, 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 to reach out, because I, I like to get the answer right from the person who wants to know.
And to Bob's point too, and, you know, God bless you, Bob, Bob is always, you know, just like you said, it's the weekend, but I, I, I'm 24/7, when someone calls me, it's just my nature, and I see it as my job to try to get back as soon as possible, I've been doing it a long time, and so, you know, so, Bob, I'm gonna keep getting back to you, but I, but I appreciate the sentiment, you know, but, but that's kinda, like, like Mark said, I mean, I'd rather take a call at any, any time of the day and know that somebody has an answer that they're looking for, you know?
So let's turn this into expectations here a little bit, 'cause that's part of what we talked about, and we're talking about the communication back and forth, and this is about informal communication, which is, we all know, is often the most powerful and, and sometimes the most important. So I think I'm hearing is that, that all the board members, whether they've been here for two years, or whether they've been here for, how long you been on the board?
Uh, it's my fourth year.
Okay, for four years, or for 108, whatever it was, 12 years?
Twelve.
Been on the board for 12 years, and, you know, they value the ability to talk to the town administrator, to bring up issues, to ask questions, maybe early on to get some clarity about how things are done, et cetera. So it sounds like that your expectation, and I think I'm hearing Rick say that his expectation is that he's fine with that. Now I think that if all of you were in his office every day, that the expectation would change, right? But, you know, I, I think you need to take that away in terms of, in terms of, you know, two of the three goals around this, it involves the way that the communication's gonna go back and forth between you all. And Jim, if you think about this, or anybody, if you think about this, the biggest mistake you can make by doing this is by him saying, you know what, we can't have this conversation because of open meeting law, or, you know, I'm not the right person, let me send you to them, that's the biggest mistake you can make, right? And, and not fostering that communication has the potential of being a much larger mistake. It's very difficult to make a mistake, you know, if you're talking to people, it's very difficult to make a mistake, you don't have to agree if you understand each other's expectations, you don't have to agree, you just have to understand them, okay? You all expect informal communication back and forth, his expectation is that that's okay, that he looks forward to it, he thinks it's helpful, it'd be hard to make a big mistake unless you go pounding down the door, okay?
And if I could just add one thing to that, I think we've talked a lot about our communications with the town administrator and with each other, but I think it's, it's equally important, you, none of us are, are in town hall every day, and I think it's equally important that the town administrator communicate with us, if something's going, you know, we are the people, the people call, when something's going on in town, they reach out to us, and if there's, if there's something we need to know, I think it's important that the town administrator communicate with us, so that we can speak intelligently about when someone calls us and says, hey, the worst thing you, worst spot you can be in, at least the spot, worst spot I wanna be in, is for someone to call me and ask me about something, and I'll have to say, well, I, I have no idea what you're talking about, let me, let me see what I can find out, and I think that's, that's important, it's, it's a two-way street, it's important for us to communicate our thoughts with the town administrator, but I think it's, it's equally, if not more important, for the town administrator to communicate things that are going on in town hall that, that affect the town to us.
And what mechanism do you have for that now?
I think it varies normally, it would be an email, I would think.
At this meeting, right?
At this, this meeting, could be a phone call, depending on, on what's going on.
Okay. So do, are you or anybody else feeling as though that, that there isn't enough coming the other way? That you're surprised too often?
Yeah.
But what, but what kinds of things? You don't have to be specific, but...
Just things that are going on in the town, and not knowing what's going on, and, and I think there's a trust issue, and it's not just here now, it's in the past too, so it's, if you don't have that trust, then you have to do your research and find out if the information you're getting is accurate, so... So, and that's, that's my feeling.
So let me push you a little bit, just so I can get clarity on what you're thinking. How big and how small an issue, I guess is my question. You know, so let me be ridiculous, okay? If there's a fire hydrant leaking, I'm assuming you don't need to be told, right? If the assistant town administrator is going to resign, I guess as you want to know. So somewhere in between there is the kinds of issues, you know, so I'm just trying to get some clarity in terms of what kinds of issues that.
I, I, difficult to say.
Yeah, okay.
You brought up an issue like with, I'm sorry.
No, I interrupt a lot.
So positions like someone resigned or retiring or things like that, that we don't always get the communication about that. And someone calls me, hey, did you hear so-and-so resigned? I'm like, no. Like, if you're a select board member, you should know that. Like, okay, I understand that. And, and I guess my other question too, to everybody is, like, if something goes on in planning department or the finance department or, you know, make, you know, OEM, should we know about that stuff? I mean, because again, people come up to us with questions all the time. Hey, did you, you know, what do you know about XYZ and, you know, the DPW or whatever? I mean, I don't think we, and again, I don't know. Are we supposed to know a little bit about everything? Because again, I think that's where most people go is to the select board members if they have a question.
So my, if I may, on that one is, that one falls into the category of, of Mark's, hey Rick, what's going on? Anything I should know about, rather than, okay, can you teach me what this and that means?
Right.
Because, yeah, there's always stuff going on and I guess, do we have to know every little thing? No, probably not, but I would imagine if you asked an open-ended question like that, that the TA should say, oh, yep, well, we had a resignation and, you know, not sure why, or I know, well, here's why. But I guess the TA also has to know that you're interested, so.
Okay, thought. So, because this example, because I'm with Jim on that. And you said earlier, if you don't know the question to ask, you don't ask it. I am of the mindset, and you can ask my husband, I like to know everything. But like, my daughter told me yesterday, and then I was going to tell you, that the, the kids think there's a wasp nest in one of the trash cans behind the elementary school. Well, if I tell him that, hoping that he will tell Dave Seidenhoff, no. You guys probably don't want an email saying that there's a wasp nest in one of the trash cans. So I'm not talking that minute, but I guess if you go in and say, so, is there anything I should know? If there's anything that is big enough to come out of his mouth and tell Mark, maybe it's big enough to come out of his fingers into an email. So if, if I miss a week with him and I don't get in in a week, the stuff that, that Mark gets that week, we all get. Even just the bullet points. It doesn't have to be the wasp nest, but maybe if it's, if it's, hey, what should I know? And we're not having a meeting the next day, let us all know. Because that goes back to my, I want us all to know the same thing.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's, I personally, don't get mad, I personally, that's perfectly fair. You know, that if there's something that was important enough, again, not the wasp nest, you know.
Right.
What's going on? Why I had to go kill the wasp nest?
But not necessarily a giant agenda item either, just a, you know, hey, yeah.
And you have to understand is that at times it could be some privacy issues.
Right.
That if someone's thinking about retiring, it's not the time to tell anybody. And maybe the word gets up before it can get out officially, those kinds of things always happen. I'm struck by the fact that the, where all the big dots that were up there are what I call big box issues, okay? And there are some little box issues up there, but, but they're all big box issues. They're all fairly much looking at the big picture. It's communication amongst ourselves, it's communication between the, between the top executive of the, of the town and his assistant and you all. It's making sure the morale of the people that are working for you are in good shape. That's all big stuff and very big, big, high stuff. So it does tell me that, and, and, you know, and now we're talking with lower, but it really does tell me that, and I don't want to get to the specific question a lot because this conversation I think is important. But, you know, it does tell me that you think your job as boards, I'm sorry, I'm not used to the term, select board members? As, as select board members is to focus on big picture stuff. Am I wrong? You know, Jim, you were asking?
I think you are wrong in a, in a way, because I think it's, when we talk to people in the community, what's, what's a big picture thing to one person is, is not to another, but if everybody, if somebody reaches out to you about something, it's a big picture thing to them. Otherwise, they wouldn't have reached out to you.
Well, it's important to them, even if it's a small picture thing.
Absolutely. I guess that's the way I always look at it. And so it's, it's tough to define what a big, obviously, you know, budgets and things like, those are big picture items. But again, somebody reaches out to you about something that one person or another might think is small. Well, it's not small to them if they called you about it, so.
I'm still stuck on that, okay, which is when you taught what your priorities were, they were a big picture. So let me restate it. You know, tip O'Neill, politics is local, right? You know, so is it, I'm going to talk to you, Mark, because you're the one that said it. Is it fair to say that your job is to focus on the big picture items of the town, but to be responsive to your constituents when they come to you?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a pretty fair assessment.
Bob, that wasn't an up and down.
Yeah, it's, because we do. We all, we all listen to our, I call them residents, our local, our neighbors. All right, we listen to what they say, all right? And they want an answer, we, it's our duty to go out there and get that answer for them. When we start talking about the town in general, I think we all have a difference of opinion of what the role of a board of selectmen member is and what it isn't.
You want to start?
Sure. I mean, my feeling is, is a board of selectmen member should know what's going on in the town. That we should have a role in how things are done within the town. I don't think our bylaws, the way they're set up now, that's why I put the one review our bylaws. I mean, I think those tell us what we can and can't do and what are out there, but I think they're skewed to some extent, so.
So I'm going to, and I feel like I'm doing this just to you and I'm not trying to.
It's okay, no problem.
I'm really just trying to understand. I want everybody to understand. So in a role of what's going on, so how deep does that go? Do you think that you should be having meetings with department heads?
I, I don't think we should be meeting, I think we should meet with department heads, at least to go to the meetings and hear what's going on. Not actually be involved in it, but just be able to listen to hear what's going on. And I was told you're not allowed to do that with the private town administrator. It's like, but how are we supposed to know how a town administrator interacts with the employees, all right? If we're not able to see how he interacts with the employees or with the department heads? So how can we evaluate somebody as their working conditions and what they're doing if we can't actually see what they're doing? So it, it, it's one of those things that it's our job to oversee the town administrator and make sure he's doing his job the right way. But it's also the fact that how can we oversee him if you tell, well, you can't do that?
Okay, Jim?
That was a good point, because when we did the evaluation, I don't know about anyone else, but when I looked at that, three-quarters of it was like not applicable, because I didn't know. I, I don't see how. And I think during our evaluation, we said that, said, well, I don't know, I haven't seen you in action with, you know, this, this person or with that department. And then that got me thinking, so should I get more involved? Kind of like Bob said, should I go to those department head meetings or go to those departments and ask them what's going on? How are you ever getting along? And are I overstepping my bounds? Because it's, I really shouldn't be doing that. And again, I'm working, I have a family, I can't be at town hall, you know, seven days a week, 24/7. But again, it's, it's that balancing that, how, how much should I know? So the evaluation kind of opened my eyes a lot, because again, I felt as though most of those questions were, I don't know.
And again, I didn't design that evaluation.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not putting it on you.
And I don't think it's a good.
But I'm not putting it on all eight or anybody.
I don't think it's a good one.
There was, there was just how can you?
Yeah, that was a previous board. And, and certain things were instituted, as Bob pointed out, under a previous administration. And I've always believed that select board members should be able to talk to employees. Not telling them what to do or how to do their job or, you know, lording the role over them, just, how's it going? How's life? How's the morale in your department?
And that's one thing I have started, Mark, gone to the different departments, department and say, hi. Some people I didn't even, upstairs, never even met them before and introduced myself. And I've been a selectman for a year and shame on me for not doing that earlier. But just to, again, any issues, what do you have, what are you hearing, what's?
Yeah, because that's where you'll hear about the morale.
For sure, right, yep. So it's.
So Rick, how do you suggest people evaluate how you work with your director for it?
Well, it's, it's a mixed bag, okay? First of all, I mean, there's a, there is a job description in the bylaws of this, the town administrator. There's a, the bylaws say what the select board's role is, what the board of health board is. But I real, I mean, I know, it still doesn't solve the balance, so, you know, to the extent that board members are going to employees, there's a balance there, okay? Because if you go to, let's say, the O and M, the DPW director, does he take away from a conversation that, in the sense that you're directing him to do something? And there are times, you know, it's not even the select board that directs employees to do something. You know, that's not the select board's job.
Right.
And if a select board member goes to a department head meeting to see what's going on, that's not what's going on. Because people act differently when there's select board members in the room. So, you know, there's no really good answer here. I think the answer is, you know, what's everybody's job? You know, the town administrator, you know, going back to Tyler, town manager, there's things that are important to get done. You know, my, you know, the town administrator's relationship with the DPW director is less important than are the goals that we set getting accomplished. And that, in my history, that's really the way it is, you know. The select board, they don't necessarily want to know if the clerk in the tax office, you know, is, you know, is leaving, okay? We had dispatcher, a part-time dispatcher who today found out he's leaving. Well, does the select board want to know? Do they call firefight leaves or dispatcher? I mean, where's that line between if an employee's been here for 25, 30 years, okay? Well, that's somebody who's more of an institutional type of a person. Somebody who's been here for a couple of years as a, you know, again, as an administrative employee in the, whatever department. You know, is, is that something that, I, I don't even think to tell the board that a part-time dispatcher is leaving, you know? So I don't, I don't know where that line is for.
Intellectually, that makes sense. But if I'm hearing Bob and I'm hearing Jim and maybe a little bit Jen, I'm not quite sure. Maybe, maybe Mark said it, is that it's not important unless someone walks up to them in Shaw's and say, did you hear so-and-so left?
Fair enough, yeah, yeah.
And then they hadn't heard so-and-so left, they feel as though, so, this is easy for me to say because it was, it was to a fault. I'm an over-communicator, as you discovered when we were talking about this, right? So, maybe to think about is there ways that you can over-communicate about things that even if you don't think it's important, they can always tell you to stop.
Yeah, well, and I think historically, especially in my last position, the board didn't pay them right away. They didn't, they don't have, they didn't want, they didn't want to know anything. And that was problematic too.
I bet it was.
It was, I would rather, I'd rather have them calling me every day. Because if, if people aren't talking to you, you don't know how to service their needs.
So are you okay over-communicating a little bit?
It's better than not communicating. And again, like anything, you know, that's one of my concerns is, how do we agree on where that, where that line is? Because I don't know unless people tell me, but I'd rather to have someone call me every day to know what the concern is or if they want to know something. Because I can't, you know, I can't anticipate, you know, when someone's out on the ball field, what someone's going to come up and say to them and ask them, maybe. I can't do that. Sometimes it's, it may not be that important, but it may be the most important thing to someone's life. They're asking you a question, but none of us can anticipate that that's something that everybody should know because it's down to everybody. I mean, how do you, how do you do that? Well, you just do your best. But where, where is that, where's that line?
Well, you know, the only thing you can do is keep on trying to find it, I think. Because you, you know, you can't put a list of, we're going to talk about this, 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 this.
Sure.
You know, we're going to stop at the wasp nest, right? I mean, you know, and I can't figure out how you do that. But I think, again, if we go back to a half hour ago, we have some people here that want to be communicated with. We have you that likes being communicated with and would rather have them asking you questions or not asking you questions, et cetera.
And I can understand where a member, members at times think that, okay, you should have, I wish you told us about that. I completely understand that that can happen and I can look in the mirror and say, you know what? That's one I probably should have, but it didn't seem that important to me, you know, and that's.
I'll say to you what I said to Jen, is I think it's hard to make a big mistake. If you decide that I'm going to start, I'm going to start communicating, you know, don't break any laws, don't break any confidences, right? Of course. But, but it would be hard for you to make a big mistake if you called up Bob and said, hey, Mark. It's not like an email, because you mentioned it to Mark when he stopped in your office, that, you know, I mentioned to Mark that one of our dispatchers resigned, just to make sure, you know, I don't know, I don't know what your timeframe is like, et cetera, but something like that. Not asking you to do a newsletter. But, you know, Jen wants to make sure that there's an equal distribution of information, which I get. Bob wants to be informed of a lot, which I get, right? So I think those are pretty easy things to do.
If I, if I could just add, I think it's important, I'd rather over-communicate than under-communicate. And I think sometimes, there are, there are things that people bring up to us that even if the answer has to come from a department head or something, I try to mention it to Rick. Because quite frankly, there might be an issue out there in town that he knows nothing about and he can't deal with it.
Yeah.
If he doesn't know about it. I mean, he's up in the town administrator's office. He's not, you know, out and about in the community, certainly not as much as five of us are. So I think it's, it's a two-way street. I think he, you know, again, a lot of times, the answer may have to come from an apartment head, O and M or DPW, what, what have you. But I think it's important that we try to mention it to Rick, because otherwise, he may not even know it's an issue.
And I'll also say that, you know, I get 100 emails a day, okay? All of you get, you're airy with information. So I try to be cognizant of that, that, you know, that everybody's just information overload. So like, you know, I try to be conscientious of that too and not, and not bother people for things that, you know, there's maybe, you know, 30 emails down in your inbox and you're not going to read it anyway. And it's probably not that important that a part-time dispatcher who, who you never knew, you never met, you wouldn't have ever going to meet that person anyway, that's not, that's not something I would, why would I inform somebody of that, that apartment? I mean, obviously, that's just an example, that's not, so I try, I do try to be cognizant of the fact that you are all overloaded with information, just like we are. So you're trying to pick and choose what you can think is important. And again, maybe burying you with another, you know, 20 emails a day is, is better. I mean, that's, this is the point, you got to tell me. And that's the problem, you know? Well, it's the challenge, you know, it's the, what do you want us to provide you to make you happy? And still allows us to do what we have to do on a daily basis.
So we know Bob feels under-informed, not necessarily by you, but some of it by the bylaws of what you can do and what you can't do. You know, Mark mentioned that he would like to make sure there's enough information coming that way from you to him as well. What do the rest of you think?
And from us to Rick?
From Rick to, I'm talking about from Rick to you then.
Mark said and from us to Rick.
Yeah, I think, I think both go both ways.
But, but he, after we talked about that, he jumped in and said it goes both ways, it comes this way too. And that's what I'm talking about now, trying to react to what Bob had to say a little bit, what Jen had to say.
Okay, two parts. One, the, the department head meeting. I, I would love to know what goes on at one of those and what's discussed, just to know the format, because we are the select board. And I know you said people will act differently if a select board member is there. What, who would act different and how? Is everybody just going to sit there prim and proper, not complain?
It's, it's because of our role as select board members.
But are people going to over-complain because they're like, ha ha, we're going to get someone in trouble?
No, I think there's going to be more intimidation. There shouldn't be, but, and especially if they don't know who you are.
So maybe if we weren't.
Jen, in my corporate life, I made my staff have meetings without me. Because I knew that they weren't going to be as open when I was in the room.
It's just the way.
They just can't be. You know, that, you know, if someone's having a problem or if someone's afraid of something, or if someone's pissed at me, excuse my language, sorry, I'm on TV, if someone's angry with me, right? You know, I want them to be able to do that. So, you know, I, I think that if you all are in every one of the department head meetings, I personally think it would, it would negatively affect the communication between the department heads and their, and their employees.
Well, and just one other thing to point out, and I have. Well, and just one other thing to point out, and I understand people feel differently, but if we were all at department head meetings, all of a sudden now, that's a board of select, that's a select board meeting.
Well, you might need to be careful of that, too.
If three of us are there, yeah.
Right, and that, now that's up, we have to post the meeting, now the public's there. So it changes the whole dynamic of, I think, some of those meetings, so just...
Yeah, it changes the dynamic a lot. Bob?
No, like, the department heads know who we are, all right? They're going to turn around and run their department the best way that they feel, all right? And I don't, I don't think they'd be afraid to speak out if we were in there or not. I think they would just do the same thing they always do all the time and have discussions in there. As, I mean, the department head meetings that I've been to, not through this, but from other businesses, everyone speaks out and they say, all right, this is the issues that we have, how do we do this? All right, what's the best way to get around this or anything? I mean, but just because we're selectmen and we come in there and we say, we just want to hear what's going on. We want to see how everyone works together. We hear they all work together and this, that, this, that. The other thing, all right, and we know how things run. Communication is really important for all of us, but we also have to go the communication with those other people that are out there. Not just the people that are working the front lines, but also our management staff that run for our town, too. And that's, I think that's frustrating, because you don't want to take up all these people's time. They're valuable, all right? And, but for us turning around and say, all right, well, one month, Mark goes, and then the next month, Jen goes, and Sarah goes, another month, and whatnot. It's not like they go into every meeting, okay? We can spread them out, so there's a number of meetings that here that we can just go and be there. And communication also is like, the fire departments got an awesome communication. They send out every week, they keep up, keep everyone informed of what's going on here in the fire department. Everything from maintenance of vehicles to staffing, to retirements. I mean, I get, I was so happy when I got on that email list, say, oh my God, I can't believe some of the things they're doing here. And I kind of wished the police department would have one their own and the DPW would have their own and turn around, because that would help communication of what's going on. But, I mean, it's not practical to some extent.
It feels important to say one thing, and it's not geared at you. You know, I've already proven I'm not afraid to give it to you. But you said a number of things you don't want to do in terms of attending department head meetings, et cetera. The other thing you don't want to do is his job, right? The other thing you don't want to do is the TA's job, and you've got a, there's a line there that you have to be very well aware of, so.
So what if department head meetings became one of those kind of emails? After a department head meeting, maybe send a summary of key things from that meeting to us? Then we're not going, we're not affecting how people are, but if there's something big in a department in town, then we can be informed a little? Something better than nothing? Because you don't want to micromanage, but I don't hate the idea of knowing what's going on in other departments.
That's what, I was going to say the same thing, was just a recap. Doesn't have to be anything elaborate. I mean, I don't even know how often department head meetings are.
Well, I think you've all figured, you all know it's not your job to micromanage, right? And it wouldn't work if it was your job to do that. So we're back to information, et cetera. You know, I just sort of pulled this again, and is there an idea here that, you know, we've all got this box we've been living in, right? Is there an idea here that you guys can take away? You know, I don't think you're going to decide sitting here tonight, but you can take away and think about, is there a way that we can feel better informed, that's not too intrusive, that won't screw up the dynamics of the meetings? I respectfully disagree with you, Bob. I think that if you guys in the room would just screw up the dynamics of the meeting, that's been my experience, anyway, but private sector, not public, I think it's different. But, you know, maybe there's an idea that you all can take away, you know, because one of your big items is the communication back and forth, so, I don't know. You know, can you ask the police chief once a month, once a week, or after a department head meeting, just to write a quick write-up about what's going on in the department? You know, by the way, I would submit to you that if they do that, it should probably be on the website for everybody to read, not just you all, but that's a, that's a different discussion, okay?
Well, I mean, that's reasonable. It's reasonable to ask a department head every month or so to give me two paragraphs on what you think are the important things that went on, the challenges, the things I hear about and others. So, again, I think that's, that's a reasonable approach to something, okay?
And if I could, I could... Go ahead, sorry.
You could be saying the same thing I am, isn't it?
Well, I was just going to say, I think one of the good ways to, to keep us informed on what's going on with departments, and to an extent, I think Mr. LaPlante does this now, is through his town administrator updates at our bi-weekly select board meetings. I think a large part, that's what, that's what that's for, is to, to update us on what's going on and not necessarily the really small things, the day-to-day operations, but the larger things that we as a, as a board need to be aware of. And maybe, maybe the board feels that, that that process should be expanded a little bit, but I think that's in big part what that town administrator update is for.
And again, we can do more of that. I think the challenge becomes, and I'm sure you all deal with it in your own professional lives, is where's the line between doing and reporting? Because we are so busy, I mean, it has a volume, and it just gets more and more and more constant. And again, you probably all see the same things in your own lives, so where is that line between doing and reporting? And I think the more you do, the less something's seen reported to you. So again, it's, you know, and again, I think, you know, what you suggest may be a good thing to try, you know, try to get just a monthly, you know, just a small, nothing fancy, couple paragraphs, that might be a good thing to...
Can I jump in?
Okay.
So, Mark and Sarah, I don't know if you were receiving these when we did them. We did do that for a little while, yeah? And what it ended up being was what you did this week, or month. I attended a training, and, you know, we had 300 calls. It wasn't issues, it wasn't the things that you guys were talking about, that you want to know about. It wasn't a resident came in and complained about this, and we settled the issue by this, by doing this. It wasn't that. It sounds like that's more of what you want to hear about, rather than, like, hiring someone.
Yeah.
You just...
I attended a training, I... I was taking a little, a little bit of a... It's like it appears if you went to a resources webinar.
And, but every department was like that. If you guys recall us, that every department basically was just writing down what they did.
And then it eventually just stopped for some reason.
Yeah, it stopped for some reason, I don't know why.
Well, it doesn't sound like it was invaluable.
It was not, I didn't feel it was valuable. It wasn't for me, it was for the board.
I don't even recall that, maybe it was prior to my being on board.
But I think it might have been that people thought that's what they were supposed to do, report, make my department look good, we had 500 calls, or I don't know. Or we issued 500 permits or whatever.
I applied for a grant, those are the things I wrote, I, when I worked on applying for a grant, you know, those types of things, that's what I was doing.
But it's possible, they may have been anxious about talking about the bigger pictures.
But I don't recall ever writing down when someone came in with a complaint, how we handled it, resolved it.
So let me suggest, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it just wasn't, it wasn't brought to my attention, those were the items. But I think if you're, maybe like if we just had a big item, we would not wait till the department head meeting, they would go like immediately, and it would get, the problem would get, you know, solution immediately. I'm going to use O and M, because they're the easiest. You know, a pipe broke last night, we have someone coming today to fix it. Is that something you guys want to know about? You know, those are the types of things, that would be an issue.
Now, if there's no water in our coven, now we get an issue. I mean, that's, that's right.
I don't want to talk too much, but that's... I just wanted to clarify, before you start saying, let's do a monthly report, that you guys want to get the information you're looking for.
Thank you for bringing that, I actually forgot.
Excellent point. I think that's a great point, Elaine. So let me make an observation, and then I just want to sort of review the bidding. And if your agenda says we're going to be done in 10 minutes, I prefer we weren't quite done in 10 minutes here, if you have a few more couple of things to talk about, but it's up to you. You get up and walk out, I drive home, it's okay. So I think that the issue that you just brought up is, because I've been in verbal department head meetings where that's, that's what it, that's what it turns into, and I'm sitting there tapping my feet, looking at my watch, saying, I don't care, right? So I think that if you decide you like this idea as a group, I think you decide, number one, which departments? And I don't think it would be too difficult to put together an outline of the kinds of things you're looking for. And I also think it's really important is that the department heads understand that there's no obligation to fill the space. That's, you know, that's one of the things that makes meetings go forever, and it makes, is that, you know, if, if there's nothing under this heading this month, that's fine, that's okay. Doesn't have to be, don't feel like you have to make something up. And the beauty of this is, let's put this under the experimentation side on the, on the box with the perforator, right? Doesn't work, stop. If it doesn't work, change it. No one's been hurt, you cannot make a big mistake here unless somebody, you know, puts something terrible in their, in their write-up, right? You can't make a big mistake here. What you do have is the opportunity to improve communication, to improve your knowledge, you know, of what's going on in the town, et cetera. I don't have a lot to say, except, except I think you have to be careful about attending the department head meetings. I think that's something you should think about and talk about amongst yourselves. I think occasionally, it's absolutely fine, but I, but what you want to be careful of is that you don't want a department head staring at the door worrying that you're going to walk through or the two of you are going to walk through, and, you know, that changes things. Because there are things, you know, if they want to talk about a personnel issue, maybe they're not comfortable doing that if you're in the room, as an example, okay? Or so-and-so did this. And at the risk of sounding trite, those meetings are often build camaraderie, right? And if they can't tell the same jokes they're used to telling because you're in the room, maybe about you, who knows, right? The kids are the same jokes, it changes it. So you've got to find that balance, and I would leave that to you to think about and talk about a little bit. So when we're talking about the goals, I want to talk about the morale, and I do have a couple more. Are we okay going a little longer?
Absolutely.
Are you, okay?
Could I just mention one thing? I know, I know the board highlighted a lot of things on here, and they're all important.
Yep.
But everything on this list, if we could just make sure we touch it all, they were all, these were all important to at least one member of this board, and I think...
Sure, if that's what you want, we can.
Before we take off, I think, and I think it's important that we at least, at least touch on all.
We're going to do that now, but I want you to do, so first of all, let me just review the bidding where I think we are so far, okay? Because I do think, and we don't have time to do it now, but I, I do think there's an opportunity for better informal communication amongst the five of you. It doesn't sound like you talk very much. I know there's open meeting laws and all that, but, you know, you're all in this together. You don't have to agree, but I do sense that, and that, that's pretty clear to me. I must be right, because two people crossed their arms when I said it, okay? So, so, you know, you know, think about that, and, you know, if you want me to come back and work on that a little bit, we can, but, but it would, again, I've been, been running departments and running a couple of companies and being on boards for a long time, and I can promise you, you don't have to agree to somebody to have a full rewarding relationship with them. And everybody always wants the same things, you just might differ how to get there. I'm going to leave it at that, because we don't have time to really talk about it tonight. But that's an observation, I would think. It's clear to me that communication is the most important thing to all of you, based on what we've talked about for 90 minutes, okay? And that's great, because you know it and you're willing to talk about it, and I congratulate you on that. We've agreed that there's going to be more informal, that everybody's willing for more informal communication going both ways between Rick and you all, okay? And you're going to find your way doing that. I think we've also agreed that Rick is going to be, to over-communicate a little bit, so that if he mentions something to Jim in an impromptu one-on-one, you know, maybe a quick email goes out, just saying, hey, just want to let you know I mentioned to Jim that so-and-so left, that's all it has to be. Now, there's a danger in that. Danger in that is that he now, he gets now five emails saying, what's going on, how did it happen, et cetera. So you've got to control yourselves, too, right?
Kind of think of that.
Yeah, so you've got to control yourselves. He goes, okay, thanks for the information. And particularly if it's something that's going to end up on a board agenda, you can say, we'll talk about it next board meeting, et cetera. So we've agreed you're going to, you're going to talk about that. Maybe a formal way of having department heads communicate a little more often, something which would be really easy to do, easy for me to say, I don't have to do it, but it would be really easy to put something together with some sort of a, of a communication back to you all, and maybe the town, but that's up to you guys, from, from, from the department heads, I think would serve you all really well. The word that keeps on coming to my mind, and Jen, I keep on looking at you, because you're the one that first brought it up, is that, you know, wouldn't it be nice, would not be hard to do, when someone's elected to a board that they're given a mentor on the board for the first few meetings? And I thought of that earlier, and I forgot to bring it up. I mean, corporate world, you do it all the time, right? All the time. So it might be something worth thinking about. So we've got that in the communication side. I really do hope we get to the morale side here, because I love the way it was put on the goals. In fact, let's start there, you said you want to go through all of them. Said you wanted to maintain the positive morale. Does everybody agree that the positive morale's pretty good? No? No? Okay.
Well, it depends what department you're in.
Okay.
If the morale's good or not, okay? I've talked to DPW people, and it's great. We love our boss, we love what we're doing, great, no problem. You go to another board, I mean, another department, and it's like, eh, just putting along, going on. Another one says, yeah, I don't like what's going on. All right, so...
And you say you don't know what's going on.
Well, employees talk to me, so I mean, hey...
No, I mean, it's a compliment.
I mean, I just, I want to be involved, I want to know what's going on with the town. And I kind of, for me, it goes back to, and people will not like me saying this, but the Mozilla era, where you had three selectmen back then, where, and I grew up in Pembroke, Pembroke's a very political town, too, so I can go back to Pembroke, but I'm just going to use Caver, is that you had your selectmen there that were really running the town. We didn't have a town administrator years and years and years ago, and that's what I was used to in Pembroke. Is that your selectmen did a lot more work, all right? And were intimately involved in all the departments.
Yep.
All right, so, I mean, and that's not where it is. So, and that's not what this town is, because we have a town administrator and, and the board of selectmen are kind of disconnected to the department ends, so there is kind of that little barrier.
Yep.
And you want to break that barrier down. That's my feeling, is, is that we all want to work together. Our goal is to make our town better than what it was, and that's my goal here, is that holy, what I've done here in my time here, that I've made it better. So I think we all have that feeling, we want to make things better.
And if I, if I may add something, too. I was an employee with the town.
Did what, so they get a little love?
I was an employee with the town, it was 1996. And that's when I first got on the conservation commission, and then I became an agent in '99. So I think that the big picture here is that I've seen the morale for a long time. I don't know, is it 25 years, something like that? And the morale was good for the first 17 years that I was there, and then it wasn't. And now it is again. And there are a few outliers, but I think if you look into those outliers, there are extraneous reasons for the morale not being good. I think overall, it's really good.
How many employees?
How many employees?
Yeah, round number.
I don't know.
About 65.
65 in the town.
Okay.
Yeah. And that doesn't include teachers.
Right, right, right.
So, and to me, morale is, comes from, you have to earn it. It's a, it's a question of respect and trust. It's not something that just you get overnight. And so I've seen it there, I've seen it disappear, I've seen it come back.
What do you think is the main factor as to why it's not there, why it is there?
I think it depends on who's the town administrator.
And why?
Because the town administrator, it started at the top. And one of the reasons we got the town administrator role in the first place, and you probably know this, is that the selectmen back in the day didn't want, and the, sorry, that current board that decided to hire the first town administrator in Carver, didn't want the Pembroke, the old Pembroke model, where the select board did everything, where one person was the board of health and the select, and the, and it was just, politics was everywhere. And the TA was hired to get rid of that politics. And I think it was a good, I think it was a good move.
Yeah, okay. So Mark wanted to make sure we got to these, okay? So let's do the best we can. I'm going to assume that we've talked about a couple of them already, just in the interest of time. But before I do, there's a little quick pro quo here, okay? But before I do, there's a, there's a little quick pro quo here, okay? I want you, I'm gonna ask you to do this twice probably, at least once. I want you to write down on, I gave you two index cards on one of them, without showing anybody else. Just write down for me one big picture goal for the town that's not on that list that you may have thought of since you made up this list, okay?
Can you give me an example? Big picture, what, what big pic, can you guys think of some big pictures?
Wanna be, you know, wanna change the tax ward, right, or I want to, um, think of something. Somebody that's in the business, tell me, think of something. Well, you know, you know, don't, don't, don't let me qualify like that.
Okay.
One goal for the town that you would have that's not on that list.
Okay.
Okay?
Can't reuse one from the list?
No! I'd love to ask this, are we doing okay here?
I think, I think we had informally figured about two hours. Beginning with.
No, I mean, are we get, we doing okay in terms of getting to the things we needed to get to?
I, I think, I think so, but I don't want to speak for the board.
Well, I let the communication discussion go a long time because it's clearly really important to people.
Yes.
That's all you get done. I think it's been a good meeting day in truth, but that's not for me to decide. Okay. Sarah, you still thinking?
All my big picture things are up there.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, give me a little picture thing. I already let you get away with I don't know. Okay, so, um, whose was this? Do you remember? Is it Matt? Says here with the financial director and the interim TA to maximize the political county cares and ARPA. I don't even know what those are, but somebody, what do you want to say about this?
I think that may have been mine. I'm not sure. It's been a while now, but I just think as COVID funds continue to come into the town, that it's important we work, that we work together, that all the departments work together with the select board and the town administrator to maximize those funds as best we can in, in the long-term benefit of the town.
So when those funds come in, who has control over them?
Uh, well, well, they, right now, I mean, the, uh, the CARES Act funds, they come in and I have control over. ARPA, we, we haven't got there yet.
Right.
You know, mechanically it'll come through me, but in terms of, you know, the goals and what's important to the board, there's policy decisions that will have to be made by the board.
Okay.
And my role will be a little more ministerial at that point. CARES Act's a little more, you know, hands-on, evaluating and, you know, approving what we're gonna apply for reimbursement for. But ARPA's gonna be, which is the American Relief Recovery.
American Recovery.
Yes. That's, you know, federal money which between the town and the county is gonna be over $3 million.
There's gonna be a lot of money coming in.
There's gonna be policy questions and, and that's good, you know?
So what is set up or what needs to be set up, if anything, now to make sure that you, you hit the ground running with this? Maybe nothing has to be done, but are you all comfortable with the fact that when it comes in, we're prepared to decide what to do? I don't sense there'd be any real hurry, but has there been any discussion? Does it need to be any now, I mean, tonight?
Yeah, there hasn't really been, been very little. I think I mentioned it to the board of just the broad categories that are, that are set up, but there's really no, um, the federal government, surprise, surprise, hasn't really given really good guidelines yet, but, uh, which does make it a little difficult. So we only have broad guidelines, but then again, we also have, you know, several years to spend the money. So it's, uh-
I do, if I could just add though, I think, do think once we get those guidelines, I think it's gonna be important for us as a board to set some priorities as to how we allocate that.
And some of those priorities might be up there on the board, right?
They may very well be.
So.
By the way, we got another $279,000 approved today for CARES Act.
Wonderful. So what else do we have to do with this, Mark or anybody else? Anything?
I'm, I'm satisfied where we are. I don't know if anyone else has any.
We're where? You know you're gonna have to make a policy, you're gonna have some money to spend, that's always fun.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. Appoint a TA? I don't know. I have no idea where you stand on that. I haven't had a discussion with anyone.
We're in the process now. Obviously, that's a, I think that's a priority for, for everybody.
Okay, are you, you in the interview process now? Yeah, or?
We've completed that interview process.
Yeah, okay. So when do you expect that decision will be made?
Uh, well, relatively, relatively soon.
Okay. Maintain the positive morale. We talked about that a little bit. Sarah thinks who you hire in that process is gonna be an important factor here, but what else does the board, and I'm, I'm gonna run through these until you slow me down, right? Because you want to talk about something. But, you know, what else does the board, if anything, want to say or do about this, right? You put it down as a goal, it's top vote getter, so it's important to everybody.
I, I think that we need to know where the morale is within our town, employee-based. Uh, and I don't think it's just employees, but it's also boards and committees. Also, between those two, I think that also has to be gauged in there at some point. But, um, yeah, I think if your, your employees are happy, then things work better. Uh, if they're not happy, then this would, I mean, is an issue.
So how would you do it? How would you get at it?
Well, I think there's two, two pieces. Number one, I agree, happy employees tend to work better or be happy because no one's making them do anything, so. The other piece of that is that, no disrespect, but, you know, let's say the DPW director, that person's appointed by the town administrator. We don't want that person going around people's backs to speak to people, I mean, we had a situation, I won't get into it, but we had a person that basically went around the back of our office for something that was, that was really important. And we shouldn't be the last to know these things. And so I think that's, it's important to have that line where, you know, we don't want to encourage employees to essentially go around the back of their boss and their appointing authority. So where is that? I think that's a, that's a very important thing for people, you know, to keep in mind.
Did you bring that up to the person?
Which one are we talking about?
Huh? Well, you said that somebody went behind their back, meaning one of us.
You brought it up to the board.
Did you talk to the person that?
We did, we talked to the employee about this.
But did you talk to the select person about it?
Um, no, I didn't think it was necessary in this particular situation.
It didn't involve the select board, did it?
Uh, well, no, it wasn't, it shouldn't have.
So when you say it went behind our backs, you meant it went behind-
Somebody went behind my back.
The office, okay.
That's right.
To talk to who? Instead of talking to you, they talked to who?
A member of the board.
This board?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I thought that's what you did say.
That's what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta-
So someone talked to someone on the select board when you feel they should have talked to you?
Well, they should have 'cause that's an employee of the town administrator.
So you talked to the you?
This is, I'm not, I don't want to make this a huge problem.
No, I just want to say-
I have to say, wait, I have to say it is a problem because if, if you went ahead and had a discussion about a select person, then that select person, you should have come and, it's about communication, both ways, two-way streets here.
Well, and it's, the situation dictates how you deal with it, that's all. When I'm talking more general board, is that when you try to get to the morale, for instance, the morale's different based upon, you know, what you give to the organization sometimes is what you get back from the organization. And that may cause bad morale for some people. But it's also, I, you know, a situation that I've seen and experienced recently that employee wants to go behind the back of their boss and come to me. And we don't do that, you know? Obviously, if you have harassment or something, that's, that's different. But if it's just because you don't like, you know, the way your boss is-
Yeah, I don't like my hours.
Well, you go to the boss first, okay? You don't go behind the boss's back. That causes organizational problems. So I think we have to be cognizant of that, that you're actually causing the organization a problem, you know, if you're not careful about that.
Okay.
And I agree, Brian, if there's something that, if somebody is doing that, depending on what the issue is, I agree, you know, it would make sense for me to go to that board member and have a conversation, okay?
Okay. So 45 years of doing this, employee morale is gonna be dictated, as I think Sarah said, from the top. And it's gonna be dictated not because everybody loves your town administrator, but they're gonna be dictated because you have expectations that are set and understood, that there are job descriptions that are understood and that they're accepted, that it is a respectful and a good, decent place to work. You've got 65 employees. If you don't have 10% of them unhappy, something's wrong, okay? It's just gonna happen, you know, you're never gonna have 100%, so.
But sometimes you can have 90% of them unhappy and that's not-
Well, then you're in real trouble, absolutely, yeah, which is what you thought you experienced a few years ago, you said.
Can I just jump into positive morale? We're talking about all the town employees. I would like to think there's been a pretty positive morale change among the board. From bef, I mean, as an outsider, watching how the previous board worked, it seemed to be very clearly divided and very tensioned. You guys were on it, so tell me if I'm wrong, but from an outsider's view, the board did not look like it was working well together, that there was a serious divide. And since joining the board, I feel like that's not the case. We're not always voting along party lines. It's not like these people are always voting one way, these people are always voting another way, and I feel that's good. That's not, you know, who knows how, you know, we're not all kumbaya. I've said that before in meetings too. But compared to my outsider view of previous boards, I feel like our meetings are more positive and maybe, I don't know if productive is the right word, than the prior board. I feel like we can work together better than before.
I, I, I never felt the problems with, with previous boards. I think I've, I've always tried to just, you know, you can disagree without being disrespectful, disagreeable, and that's just the way I've always tried to, to be. Uh, you're right, we, we, we're not always five to zero or, but you're never gonna be. We're five individual people, we're five individual views and that's how it should be. And, uh, you know, whether it's five to zero or three to two in some contentious issue, I think the key is always to just try to be, you know, respectful of one another.
I think we do a good job of that and, as an outsider, I didn't see that among prior board. It seemed very, I don't like you, I'm always gonna think you're bad, I'm always gonna think what you say is wrong. Where with us, it's-
Why are you looking at me when you say that?
Okay, you know, so, no.
So let me make an observation. I'm outside looking in. I, I have no idea what previous boards were like, but, you know, if, if Rick would ask me, what do you think of the board, which you won't, you know, after this meeting, I would say that I think it's a board that's not afraid to talk to each other. I do think you can do better, more, more informally, as I said, that's a sense that I have, but I sense you all work pretty well together. I have seen nobody that's afraid to disagree. I think everybody here's a disagreeer at least once with somebody in the room, including your TA, which is important because you don't want a yes person in that chair. Uh, you know, some people do, but as a board, you don't. Sorry, I don't mean some people in this room. People out there, why not? This board apparently doesn't. I find this one curious and the reason, and I'll tell you why I find it curious. The update of the 2000, 2015 open space and rec, and I stopped writing, oh, to be in compliance with state grants. Two of you said this is important. I did notice that this was one of your goals for 2019 as well on what you sent me, so that, that states one of two things, either is you did a lot of work, there's more to be done.
No, but it's, what it means is that the open space and recreation plan expired in 2015.
Okay.
And some of us asked for that to be, that process to start up and it has not started until just this year.
Whose responsibility is it to start?
Well, someone has to get the committee together and, and our current TA has gotten that going.
Okay, alright, so you're working on it?
And the master plan was updated, it, that was also on there, that was updated in 2017, but it's almost time to start that again too, so I included that.
Okay. If, if you'll allow me, I think we've talked about this and, you know, three of these are clearly the same issue as far as I'm concerned. The community outreach, I, I, I think is very much related to this one. Whoops. Oh, this isn't permanent.
I was community outreach.
Yeah?
Um, I think sometimes there's such a disconnect between inside and outside. We always talk about rural feel and our neighbors and stuff, but if you're not involved with stuff that goes on in, in town hall and the committees and stuff, you don't really know. And as much as social media is the bane of society, it's also a great resource. I think we should be using it more. I think we should be using it for more than just serious administrative things. Let's give, let's make it friendlier, like we're talking to our neighbors. Let's, if the town's having an event, let's do it. Let's just do video updates, you know, with a quick hi. Let's just do something. Let's use it more as a resource, as an asset, to reach out to people. And, you're gonna roll your eyes, the little yard sale that we put on, because it was a we thing, it was a select board. I know events like that could fall under the recreation committee's jurisdiction or the cultural council's jurisdiction, but that doesn't mean that the select board can't do stuff too. Like I know in Plymouth, they turned their town hall, they had like an art show inside. That's cool, and maybe there's another group in town that could do that, but it doesn't mean we can't do that stuff too. To make people more excited about the town and feel involved and stuff. The feedback from the yard sale was insane and it was just a yard sale. There's so much potential for us. We got people calling us when there's problems. Let's have people calling us, emailing us and stopping us in shots to say, hey, that was really cool. Not just, hey, I have a problem. So I don't think that it's unreasonable for us to try to do stuff and really, social media and, oh, and the other thing I thought of too, which was really cool, and I don't know if other towns do it, but like, um, an app. Like an app, people could, I, I don't like apps, but it could be really beneficial to have not a watered-down version of the website, but a more simplistic one. So you have the app, you go to it, there's, you know, very few things. Here's the meeting calendar. Okay, I want to check when a meeting is. I don't have to go to carverma.gov and click here and click here and look at the agendas. It's right there. Or basic contact information, or events, just a very basic version. And I don't know if that's a town thing, but if it's not, like the thing where you says that's how we've always done it, let's be the pioneers in, in municipal town apps.
Do you have a communications director in town?
No.
So how do you get at that?
Shoot, I'll do it. No, no, but seriously, like-
No, no, it's a serious question. How do you get it? I mean, there's a lot there.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of possibility, you know? I served on a couple of boards and one small thing we did was that we all did it just a quick video introduction of ourselves and who we are and about our family, et cetera, so people know us better. And it's a pretty small town, so my guess is most people know you, but I promise you not all people know you. You know, in what you do, so. I, I, I love, I love the idea. I don't know how you get at it if you don't have a communications director and, you know?
Well, we figure out, maybe the five of us can work and start something, you know? Again, we're, I don't see my role as ending when our meetings adjourn. And I think we all agree and it would be nice to do positive things between our meetings instead of just dealing with problems. You know, Carver Old Home Day, maybe if one of us goes to Old Home Day, take a little selfie video, hey, I'm at a old home day, check out the, the horseshoe tournament. Carver Night Out, go there, you know, interview somewhere, just show something, just community stuff. Not always, there's no water in North Carver, or, or there's an opening on this committee. Some, you know, just, if we're a community and we're small town rural, let's have more community in the way we communicate with the town, communication. There you go.
Of course, you do see the incongruity of saying we're gonna stay rural, but we're gonna tell people rural with electronic communication.
No, we're talking rural. That's how they-
It was a joke.
I don't, I may not be the first one to download the app, but it's a good idea.
I need you to fill out one more, okay? So good stuff. I, I don't hear a, a plan here, but I think you have a champion here and that's something that guys can continue to talk about. Um, review the bylaws.
Yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, maybe you said that was yours, yeah?
So I mean, our bylaws, there's a, there's a bunch of them in there that really need to be thrown out. I mean, yard sale, a stupid yard sale bylaw. Seriously, you need a permit to get a, go have a yard sale. That's stupid. I mean, just get rid of it. It's not, not needed or whatnot. But then you also have the town administrator bylaw. I think that needs to be reviewed again. Um, I think we also have to look at town administrators, I mean, um, the board of selectmen, what your role is and how that is done.
Is that bylaw or charter?
It's bylaw.
Bylaw?
Yeah. So I mean, like you said, I think we need to do that and bylaws are supposed to be reviewed. Not every year, but every three years, five years. Look at them all, see what's different and what needs to be changed or modified. Because like I said, the board changes, the town changes and, and maybe things need to be done. But you can't, if you don't start someplace, you're not gonna end.
So here's my suggestion. My suggestion is that if, if, if the mantra is still is review the bylaws, I'll bet you'll never get there. I'll, I'll take a long time. If the mantra is review bylaws in this year or this month or this, whatever quarter, in these two areas, break it up into smaller pieces?
I, I tried to do that. I'm, I'm gonna try, I tried to do that with a prior board, okay? And I got stabbed in the back, okay? My feeling is, is that I had ideas about changing the bylaws.
Yeah.
I brought them to the chairperson and I says, hey, can we discuss that? And what ended up happening was, is the chairman put it on the agenda as in the actual town meeting warrant, where the board never got a chance to talk about it. And I pulled them because the board didn't talk about it. It's not fair to just have my ideas out there. It's all of us and, and that didn't happen. I, I, I tried to do that once and it's, didn't happen. It, it, it was very frustrating, but-
Sounds, I can hear it in your voice.
Yeah. Uh, the next one's mine too. Select board chair and vice chair duties. I still think what we should have- I still think that we should have a binder for each one of us to pass along to the next select board member that comes into our place and say, "Hey, this is the role of the chair. This is the role of the right, the vice chair. This is the role of the members," okay? And they just have a guideline to say, "Hey, these are the big-ticket items that, hey, you have to do right here." And then you have little ones here, and I think that's a great way of going at it, because we don't have a mentor. I think mentors are wonderful. All right, and I have to say, there's been two former selectmen that I have reached out and asked questions to, okay? So, I mean, it's difficult.
It is. I have a question for... Is that if you were going to go ahead and do that, other than those things that are prescribed by bylaw, who decides what the other things are? How do you agree on what the other things are that you need to be aware of?
Well, I attempted to talk to past select board chairs, and no one wants to talk about it. So, I mean, you kind of get that sense of saying, "Well, guess what? I'm not a chair." Okay? I was a vice chair for a year, but, I mean, really, you have to be in the position and you have to turn around and get the information from the other people, say, "Hey, this is really what your job role is here, is the chairperson." Because Mark may not be here, all right? The next person that comes in, who's going to be? The chair. All right? So at least if you have a guideline of, "These are the major responsibilities that you need to take care of," all right, and how things go.
Can I jump in? That kind of piggyback on my, it's important to follow through, because we had that discussion before. I think we all agreed it was a good idea, but no one ever took the initiative to actually make that binder. You had the idea, make a big binder.
I'm still craving mine.
Right. Well, so, okay, so that's the important follow-through, because we thought it was a good idea, but it hasn't come to fruition yet. And I think if one appeared, whether you made it, or you worked on it, or you worked on it, if one of us brought it to the table at one of our meetings, then we could work on it, and then we'd figure it out. But since that very first discussion, nothing has come to us, so that goes back to the fault. We have a habit of talking about things that are really good ideas, but then don't get done, and that's an example of one of them.
All committees do, particularly committees made up of volunteers, right? I mean, you know, all committees do. There's no way to hold your feet to the fire to say, "You've got to do this."
Right.
So it has to be important enough to the committee and then important enough to an individual.
Right.
I'm not sure what to do with this, other than I hear the frustration, and I actually think it's a good idea, as I mentioned an hour ago, to have something like that, so I hope you do. Talked about that. Someone want to tell me what this one means? I mean, I understand the words, but what's the context?
That's mine. We have financial management policies for the select board.
Yeah.
And I just think those financial management policies, what has enabled us to build a police station, update the playground, the fire station, all the things that we've been able to do in town, and I think it's important. These things don't just continue by themselves. We have to make a conscious effort to continue them, and I think it's important for this board and future boards to do that, to keep the town in a very healthy financial place.
Excellent. Want to walk to with the new capital... The new reorganized capital outlay committee to prioritize capital projects? There weren't any things on there. This sounds like a pretty big deal to me. Certainly a big picture item.
Yeah.
Is that something that goes to your finance committee as opposed to this committee first? Is that...
Well, it goes to the capital outlay, and ultimately, the finance committee makes a recommendation on all fiscal matters, but historically, the capital outlay committee has really been one of the, let's say, almost premier committees, go back to the '80s. And before the reorganization, the capital outlay committee was in charge of bringing the proposals directly to town meetings. So there was a disjoint between, I mean, you can't have capital outlay making a recommendation and a finding. I guess you could, but it's disjointed. It's disjointed, so that, and also changing the membership to make it more of a self-perpetuating type of order. So it's an update that was well-needed. Overall, though, the process and... Well, I think the product has been pretty good, but the process was starting to break down over the years just because of turnover, membership, the organization of it. So hopefully, we overcome that part, so it's a matter of getting new committee kind of up to speed on how we organize and how we finance capital needs.
Okay. Terrific. I'm going to tell you what these say in a minute, just to see if it resonates with anybody, but before I do, on that card, and I'd like you to write down just the one most important takeaway you've gotten out of tonight.
Oh, no, I messed up. I did two big-picture things.
I know, and that's why I gave you another card.
Oh, you took them, okay.
I gave you another card.
Okay.
Can I just, I think, I don't know, maybe we missed them, but I have two items on my list that I didn't check off, so maybe...
What did we miss?
Maybe we just... One was increased residents' opportunity to join boards and committees.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I just sort of included that under community outreach.
That's fine. I just don't know whose it was, and I don't know if somebody wants to speak to it, that's all. And the other was to increase community outreach, and I think we, actually, we did talk about that. I think I just missed checking it off. So that's all.
Okay. So, one takeaway. You can write anything you want, other than don't ever have Mark come back, okay? Anything else? Anything else you can write down? One big takeaway. So while you're doing that, here's some things for you all to think about. So, one person would like to do more housing, affordable town property, look for, oh, it looks like delinquent houses? Anyway, they want to do something with, you know, for more, have some affordable housing in town. Make sure all officials know what their responsibility is. I think that's related up there, but that stayed as specifically there. I don't know what COA means, but build a new COA building. What's COA mean?
Causement nature.
Oh, okay. Sort of related to the housing thing a little bit. The Route 44 Urban Development Project Coordination. I'm sure you all understand the context of that. To work towards a lower commercial tax rate. Someone owns a business in town. I'm going to say this one to last. Make people want to reach out when things are good, not just bad. Rethink the mining, the zoning bylaws to reestablish the rural feel. So, interestingly, is that the only one that was mentioned twice, so something worth thinking about, was affordable housing. That's what the last one was, to do something with affordable housing. So just, again, something, help you understand...
What was the one before rethinking zoning?
I'll just change the order. Hold on. I'll figure it out. I said COA, urban development...